Oh, they'll, uh, thank the Lord, thank the amazing Lord, the three of us. The family, thank the Lord, through the flag. Thank the Lord, through the flag.
And to the Republic, which is stands in motion.
The page. Oh my, okay. All right, we need, uh, I'm going to do these, um, mature. I make most, I make most of these. I just, I could always say that I'm getting that.
Yes?
The meeting, okay. All right, we move on to next one on the agenda, uh, please. You're saying, all right, we have a motion for a first, second, and a motion for a second, I always say when I'm saying, uh, 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 so. Motion, yeah. Um, item number four, approval of the minutes from our May eighteenth special meeting. Thank you. Our motion to approve of the second. Thank you. Motion for a second, I always say that I'm saying that. All right, the third. Motion, yeah. All right, moving on to number five, old business, discussion on Article nine, you're an approval, three. That's right. So, uh, we're starting a conversation on, uh, regarding hearings. It's not listed in the work plan, uh, but it's been one of the issues that's come over, come over the past year. Um, specifically types of hearings, when they require. Came up when considering hearings requiring for special use applications. Uh, so I was copying and pasting, uh, in my memo, some language from section nine four two. Specifically regarding special uses. And kind of skimming over that, um. Some of that language is ambiguous, so like, for example, section E refers to planning board, uh, it's a very good idea that section. Uh, within just the board, uh, second, uh, second, uh, section, section. So it's, and you think it is a little ambiguous, uh, that's the word board that's talking about, uh, whether it's the planning board or board commissioners. There is a statement elsewhere in the word, saying, uh, that board commissioners, the three persons, board, elsewhere in the word. Uh, but it was ultimately, every time you see the word, just the word board, it's referring to board commissioners, but it's, uh, a little ambiguous, that's what I'm talking about, so. Might be worth, uh, making that more clear, and, uh, particularly in these certain sections, uh, just referring to board commissioners. Uh, to remove that ambiguity. Um. And similarly, section F and G have some of those situations, where they refer to planning board and board. Um. And then also, uh, the order gives the board commissioners the approval authority. Uh, and it's the board commissioners, uh, that then has evidence to this hearing. Often those quadric judicial hearings. Uh, because it's ultimately the commissioners that make that quadric judicial decision. Um, and especially use applications, it's still reviewed by the planning board first, and then recommended to the board commissioners. That planning board review is essentially recommendations only, that's what, uh, this section. That I copy and paste from the board to get that. That's, okay, review, recommendation, planning board. Um. So that review by planning board is not a quadric judicial, judicial decision. It's just a recommendation, well. Uh, and it's also worth pointing out that. The North Carolina Senate, that's, that's one fifty U, doesn't require planning board review as part of, uh, review and approval, excuse me, of the town. Long story short, it's also take board commissioners, I think, to ultimately decide and. With that all being said, to give everybody, uh, on the same page, to give a little minirack around the different types of hearings that should be involved. Uh, I got some links here, and I'm, and I'm pulling up the first one. Uh, the first one is from Adam Loveley, that's, uh, staff of empty school government. Um, if you remember that name, Adam Loveley, twenty years, come up, so that I'm here before, uh. He had a really good explanation, uh, in the quick of the brain, uh, of the different types of hearing, this was, uh, part of the. Uh, awful powers they were having, and it's been about a year ago. So that's linked, I didn't want to. Yeah, he told them. Take four on, on, sure. Right. Yep.
Yeah, um. All right, let me explain on the terminal. Referencing what's. Uh. There is, uh, one of the things that I wanted to be, uh, by the way, it's a form of the, and clear of the. But, and even also is a, here's the area of all. Uh, and one of the things that I think is important, and one of the biggest little pieces is, it's more qualified judicial. This is a way from public hearings, to, we have to buy it, and. Here's a way, this is a signal, this is a, this is a, this is a, this is a different kind of thing, and so, this point, there's public hearings, to refer into. There were that I have, and on this issue, this is an evidence hearing, hearing, twice as important. So, this is one of them, they might be called, and it's quite large, and it's a way, they went to the public, and this is, this type of. So, I would, and there's a, just from, there are public hearings, that's. You could call it a public evidence hearing, uh, and remove this and all that, but I would say, not the public, just referred to that. Uh, obviously, also, we use the language for, uh, this is the first clarified, it would say, legislative. Obviously, we use, you know, legislative, uh, that is, but the board eyes, the board, that's what it's done as, public hearings. Uh, so, if you're paying attention to what you're saying, uh, playing it off, that we're still on the thing, uh. Prefer that, public hearings, we call it legislative hearings, I think, they are, from now on. Uh, I'm, I'm, legislative hearings, at five, and, like, maybe, you know, I would generally prefer that, as a part of, I would saw me for. Evidence, uh. Uh. Yeah. Yeah, yes, so, uh, hearings for a legislative system, would be a legislative. Uh, and so, if we saw that, if it's a tax, if it's a doctrine of, uh, board, uh, yeah, if it's the doctrine of the top. Those are legislative, and those are public, and those are legislative. There is a third category of administrative. Uh, this is not, like, the city administrative, uh, so, uh, we would sit down and review the stuff, and, 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 and. But there are specific areas where they don't give you for a hearing, or. Uh, how did those forces, the five areas, and which are, are. Were, uh, all. Uh, and, so, that's a third category, and we've got legislative hearings, for, they draw all. We have evidence hearing, hearing, for quadric judicial. From that, we have administrative hearings, for.
The first one, um. I'm just gonna go pretty, I'm gonna do that, hopefully, the whole one fifteen A language, used the term public hearing. Now, specifically, that's public hearing, and it's a re-derm, all the typical public hearings, um, typically have. Uh, then there's the whole quadric judicial hearing, was now evidential. Uh, that's where quadric judicial. Uh, that's where the lawyers are involved, uh. Uh, you made a point that that does have to change, but probably suggested it, and, uh, fitting into a lot of those couple of, and that, so. Uh, in addition to that, it's like, uh. Before we go, just, uh, use the other word, it's so. Similar. Yeah, are you, are you ready for some discussion, for any, so, I already heard enough, I'm gonna, I don't know. Term knowledge. Yeah, I just, that's what I. That was gonna do with it. Uh. I'm fine with, with, well, we'll start with a, so, the hearing, or the question, play it. I, I hear what the gentleman was saying about, you know, how to sit, but I think, I guess I would traditional, and I would love to keep the public hearing from, um. Say legislative hearings, to me, that gets that, it's a state, the US Congress, or General Assembly, not, have those down here. I think, it's, it's, um. Um, those, those public hearings, as there's some kind of genuine action taking place, especially when you touch on this, there's only chances. What, what that is, and you got the opportunity, and you come forward, or, or, it's fresh, that, it's like, it's like, the public. Personally, I like the change in the language, evidential, it's a way to quadrate, or say that, that's free. Yeah, people here, we had the training pool, labor, for those who quadrate, judicial hearings, and folks don't understand what the process is. But, not, I think, that's my, but my help. Um, that's it, when we, we, right, this twenty. You're right, it has not been, but it has. I, 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 uh. It was, that's very, just, right, the one that, right. For, for, because I don't know where that is on the plot, so. Yeah, well, may or may not, but I haven't, so. But, I, I don't have any more, uh, if we don't change. Public hearings, like, we're not being taught. Yeah, I mean, even, even if you want to tell the public, that's, but, you guys know. Arm, with. Very clear, yeah. Uh, I mean, I, I'd be glad to listen to it, but, before we move to that, um, for, uh. Yeah, probably. First, I look like that cop. The ladies here are, oh, that's another one I'm talking about. I'm walking back cop. Right, but, but, the young lady in the video that was, uh, struggling with legislative hearing, and. Evidenceary hearing, first, first, she's like, I guess, we, she's, she's Charlotte, that's one. But that had to be a big, a big, uh, that was, yeah, I've heard the, uh, concern of that. Proper etiquette. Yeah, that's our, that's. I sense millions, that's what bill, public, charge. Just to say. See, I've got, I've got, on the floor myself, is, uh, that evidentiary hearings are open to the public, the public. Yeah, I'm saying, like, right, it's, right. Well, they have same thing. Yeah. Do you agree? That's, that's, that's. Don't say, oh, which, just say, right, right, just for here, okay, we agree. Okay, I hope it's all by none, of the quadrate, sorry. Yeah, why, but, oh, we got rid of that, but, and it's a part of it, I, uh. I hopefully started to make a difference on the first five pages of Article nine. Um, the last paragraph, if I mess up, uh, I mentioned that. The word hearing occurs ninety-three times in Article nine, in one fifteen. Probably don't prove. Don't prove anything. Public. Yeah, I'm, I'm. It's, 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 it's. We don't lose power for public hearings. Or it takes, the public, to, to switch down. It's further. Or I, I see that, I think. I think it'll go through, I don't know, to the public. Probably by an edit, it, you're getting at a good point, that's section nine one seven, general notice requirements for public hearings. That is covering both legislative and legislative. Public hearings, and, uh, work, uh. Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, uh. The language in nine, doesn't much, it's a little bit. Well, I think, right, but, yeah, uh, but I think that we have, personally, the board, the language, to use, you know, you look at the words. Yeah, they, but all they do is, the, the hearing, uh, changes, and also, the, part of our, and, whether. This is a forward, uh. Who, did you then figure out? I think it was, somewhere, somewhere in the word, forward, it's out of that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, recently, it worked, can be individual. Right, I, I want to do it. Yeah. So, next month, I'll come back. When they have, uh, all the things for those words, and the whole, the article. And, oh, what's, long, so, yeah. Because, first, it adds, you know, I thought, we, three words, get this, or, was I, or, 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 or. The point I make is, uh, a major development by playing more through by playing more. Yes. That's my question about. I would invite representation of the way positive judicial fine, put back the, uh, expressions. But there's major cases, does do any importance or not. Yeah, I thought the language was. Well, yeah. Don't have to pour the dark. Okay, anything else on, uh, Article nine? Next item, there's a structure.
He filed it, um, support law.
Nothing wrong. Does it begin first today? We want to explain. Like, uh, I saw. You know, probably, but when you just, uh, yes. When, when was it playing that?
Let's have a really rather start and, and what is it? Unfortunately, I think so.
And they still haven't done.
It's, uh, sorry, it's everything. Uh, and there are slower people that are very vague and confusing. I would think what can start? I, I, I would probably go along.
All.
You just fall.
Start in place. Like next week. To start. Or start. Not a big, big, dark. Oh, it's maybe thirty-five. Probably winter flow down. What do you think? I would look my next time. That's my reason to ask that. Yeah, because things move pretty fast and, and it's like, okay, then. In that, uh, way.
Yeah, and then the other, uh, part is that they have. If you could. While. It's the way he goes and the long term. And what they. In our. What's the difference? We are that. We can offer everything. As. That we have.
Properly. Two, two, um.
Yeah. Wow.
There's someone probably, probably. Three months, uh, for. When it's the right most graphic. Uh, um. Something please. These days. Somebody that's all. That, uh, player, my initial thought was, you know, some water. Oh, that's. Looks good. What's this? What's this? How? How long? You'll miss me. Pretty much. What's her?
So I was.
So, so I've been taking. I was over at Boating. Anecdotally, I was over at Boating with thirty-four, Catholic. Mouser came out and we were closed, nobody showed up for it. The manager didn't even show up.
I was a, you see a grill. Are you saying? No, no, no.
We need six people open, we only got two of us. I was hoping that they came out and show up.
Nobody wants to.
Who's our, I'm afraid they're retiring. If they're dying off. Um. Well, we don't can talk about. Uh, that plan.
All right, the question, um.
I just bring it up, but whoever, the first one was.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to be here.
Awesome.
I'm.
So. That's, uh, I'm gonna be excited for me if I real foot. But congratulations, nothing, the time, uh, you're, you're swearing, man. I like, dude, we're just a bad. Uh, anyway, I hope, I hope everyone, um, I know, has, we've had some rough trees there in the last six months or so. We've navigated those storms pretty well and everybody still compelled and come back with more. Still, still, still want to work it. Some more. So enough said about that, maybe it's just filling out the application, so. Yeah. Gerald, we just playing on, seeing you on the web. Will you be available for ourselves, like well, please?
Yeah.
And hello. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Here. And that. Right. And. Hope. Hopefully we'll be able to have a form. So. If. Just to help say after. They come back. From. How. Not going to. For. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Great. Come on. Sounds like. Do you have a business? For. Thanks. I. And. Like. Period. And. No. Life swell.